Okay, it is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting of the whole order February sixteenth twenty twenty-one at six P M. I will ask for a motion for approval of the February second twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Don't move.
Who was that? Mary Jane?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second. All right.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I go ahead and call roll? It's not on the agenda, but can I go ahead and do that to start off?
Absolutely. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Mims. Alderman Bill Van Buesker.
Here.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Buesker.
Here.
Alderman Emerson. Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Asia.
Absent. He's excused.
Alderman Alderman Hunt.
Here.
Alderman Walters.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. So we have a motion by Mary Jane and a second by Mr. Hunt for the approval of the February second twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meetings. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening first and second.
First and first was Mary Jane Van Buesker, second was Mr. Hunt.
Thank you.
And no discussion, so call a roll.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Buesker.
Yes.
Alderman Hunt.
Yes.
Alderman Mims.
Yes.
There she is.
Alderman Ward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alderman Emerson. Alderman Green.
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Buesker.
Here.
Alderman Walters.
Yes.
Alderman Asia.
Excused.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Okay, I will.
All right, motion passes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can hear you and your other phone, too. Passes. All right, next, moving on to planning commission overview. Point of contact, Jennifer Barrett, City Attorney, and Chris Gilbert, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. What do you all have for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So sorry, I'm gonna switch and share my screen here. These are the same slides that were in your packet. So just a little bit back in January, the planning commission had asked staff to bring forth some information, really talking about what their role is, as well as what is the process for approving, you know, various applications. So I'm going to really go over kind of a big fifty thousand foot view of planning and zoning. And then I think Chris is probably gonna follow up with more details about what the city's specific requirements and processes are. So with that, I'll get started. So to understand planning and zoning, I think it's kind of important to just think back of where did this come from? Because planning and zoning regulations really aren't as old as, say, other legal concepts. And really, where planning and zoning got its start is from nuisance, which is something that we still have today. But the basic theme of nuisance is, is that you're free to enjoy your property until your enjoyment interferes with someone else being able to enjoy their property. And so that was fine, but the problem with nuisance is, is you, first of all, had to wait for a nuisance to actually occur before anything could be done. And then, secondly, you, you know, an individual had to bring a cause of action typically in court to try and resolve the matter. And so back in kind of the Industrial Revolution started to take place, you had people who were moving from, you know, making products by hand in their homes to all of a sudden now doing it on a mass scale. And, you know, building factories. And so these factories were going next to homes, causing, you know, various noises and smells. And so it was creating a real problem. And so the federal government had to step in. And so what they created was what they called enabling acts. And so by the late nineteen twenties, every state has adopted able, and these enabling acts. So there's two of them. One is the Standard Planning Enabling Act, and the second one is the Standard Zoning Enabling Act. So for Missouri, our enabling acts are located in chapter eighty-nine. So talk a little bit about planning first. And planning is that process of really just creating a vision of how you want your city to look. You know, where do you want residential? Where do you see industrial? Again, you're trying to look at it from, you know, bigger perspective to see how the city wants to look. What's the vision? A lot of people, a lot of cities call that their comprehensive plan or master plan. But that document could be one document, it could be several, meaning I know Lee Summit had master plans for not only streets, but also for infrastructure. And so they had a lot of different plans for the city. The important thing about these plans are, is they really are a guide for future developments. They are not legally binding, but what they do serve is, is to help with regards to when applications come forward. Or, for example, if you're rezoning some property, you can look to that master plan and say, okay, is this consistent with what we, you know, want to see happen? So while we talk here about maybe things to consider when creating a plan, these are really some of the same things we should consider when, you know, revising the plan as well. So the city of Raytown does have a comprehensive plan. You have a highway three fifty corridor plan, as well as a, you have a central business district plan, which I would consider all those to be in the realm of a master plan. But one of the things that you should be looking at, and certainly these plans should be revisited. Maybe it's every, every five or ten years. It's whatever you decide, but, you know, things do change, development changes. And so these are good things to then go back and take a look at. But what you wanna do is go back and look at what were the goals that we were trying to establish? Is, are those the same goals? Do some basic research. Where, where do we see the population going? Where are people moving to and from? What's your current land uses, you know, and preparation of a plan, while there are entities out there that you can pay to help you create the plan? It's certainly not required, but those are some things you wanna look at, is your land uses, where do you want community facilities, open areas? So lots of different things to consider. So when this plan is created, adopting of the plan, and this includes, again, this includes if you're going to change the plans, you wanna, it requires a public hearing, which is a fifteen day published notice. It has to be before the planning commission. The planning commission, in order to approve it, it requires a vote of the majority of the full planning commission to approve. And so once it's approved by the planning commission, it gets certified and it's sent to not only the Board of Aldermen, but the City Clerk and the County Recorder. Now, I will tell you, under statute, that this is the planning commission's main purview is to create this plan. And so while a lot of cities will have the governing body review it and adopt it, that's not required by statute. So then we get into the membership of the planning commission. So under statute, it's seven to fifteen members. One of the members may be the mayor, if the mayor chooses. One of the members may be an alderman, if, if the alderman chooses, and which the city Raytown has. Alderwoman Emerson is your, is your person. The planning commission can also decide if those council or mayor, if those are just non-voting liaison members. I will tell you at this point that there is a matter on the regular agenda. It's under the consent. It's a resolution to appoint Mr. Hunt as, to the planning commission. And one of the reasons that staff's bringing forward that, that resolution to you now, instead of maybe waiting, is, is that we've had with, currently, we have a nine-member planning commission board. Four members are now gone. And so that means all five remaining members must be at, at the meetings, or else we can't have a meeting, which means applications cannot be heard. Since Alderman Hunt, his term is gonna end on the Board of Aldermen in a little over a month, staff is just requesting that he be appointed to the planning commission. Again, while there may be a planning commission in March, those items won't be finally determined by the Board of Aldermen until probably late May or early, or excuse me, late April or early May, when Alderman Hunt is no longer on the Board of Aldermen. So staff thought that that was, that was reasonable. I thought that was reasonable. The other thing about the membership is, is that there is a four-year term, staggered term. The board yearly will elect a chairman and a secretary to run the meetings and to take minutes. And the planning commission may be combined with the zoning commission, which is why you have a planning and zoning commission. I will tell you, just, it's very difficult to get people to serve. And if you had to create a zoning commission as well, and try and get people for that zoning commission, it, it just becomes more and more difficult. So luckily, the statutes do allow for that planning commission and zoning commission to, to be the same board. So now moving into zoning. So zoning is really determining how is the land gonna be used? And so things that you look at in the zoning regulations are what type of uses can take place on the property, what's the height, the density, what's the appearance of buildings? You know, setbacks, those are the types of things that the, you know, that are on the zoning commission, if you will, to review. All cities in Missouri that establish zoning and, and may establish zoning, but they have to have a zoning commission. So I've worked with a couple of small cities that don't have zoning, and so they get really mad when they hear there's not much you can do if a landfill wants to locate right next to a residential, you know, house, because there's no zoning to regulate the use of that property. Typically, you see, when zoning, it just divides the city into different areas, and you can see that normally represented on a map. And the typical zones you'll see is, you know, single family, a commercial, industrial, agricultural, those are all pretty standard. Some cities get more detailed and will have different types of, uh, single family, maybe single family with big lots. They may have multifamily and different types of multifamily. So it's really how the city wants to kind of divide up the city and have, you know, how they wanna do that. So again, zoning commission is the body that recommends zoning, not only the zoning code, what does the zoning should, what should the zoning say? But it also recommends amendments to that. As I said before, you have to have a zoning commission if you're going to have zoning. And again, you can combine this with your planning commission. So here's just a few statutes to refer to, to with, which really addresses the commission. I won't go over those. So in a nutshell, oh, go ahead.
Jennifer, before you move forward, can you, one of the portions under the planning, after the fifteen day public hearing, fifteen days of publish, and then once you get the majority of the full planning commission approved, after approval, it says certified copies are sent to the council clerk and the county recorder. Why is that sent to the county recorder? Just for people to understand.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, I want people to understand that when it's sent to the county recorder, why that is.
Certainly. So it just becomes, it, it comes apart, a record of the property. So people who are coming in, who are wanting to maybe develop, this is one of the things that they will see is, okay, here's a plan. The city has adopted a plan, and I may wanna make this property an industrial property, but you've got a master plan that says this really is supposed to be commercial. So that may help with decisions on whether they should actually purchase the property, or, or at least for, for people to ask questions and come to the city and say, here's what I wanna do. Can we change this? So again, the plan can always be changed. So, and a good example of that was when Legoland was coming to the metro area. I think Lee Summit happened to be one of the cities that they were looking at, and the city, there was a specific piece of property that was not, one, it was not zoned, but also the, the plan for the city didn't call for this kind of recreational amusement area. And so the city went through the process to amend its plan to allow for that. I mean, obviously, that's not where Legoland ended up, but just to show you that, you know, it's a plan, you can change it, but did that help answer the question, Damon?
It did.
Okay. Sorry, let me get forward here. So, so the role of the commission in planning and zoning decisions, just to kind of break it down, they are primarily a recommending body. As you're aware, so any type of zoning request or application that comes through, they're gonna make a recommendation to the board. The board has the ultimate decision on those, on those requests. However, when it comes to adopting a comprehensive plan, that, again, by statute, is really in, is really in the planning commission's purview. And so as long as the planning commission approves it, there's really no, certainly the board could approve it, but they're really just approving it and as, as more of a, it's just more of a blessing, if you will, versus an actual act of the government. Lastly, review and approve all plans for new public infrastructure and facilities. So anytime that you're looking for, to approve the location, extent, and character of some public facilities, there's a provision that says, planning commission, you make a recommendation. However, if your recommendation is to disprove that application, then it gets, it goes to the governing body, and the governing body can only overrule the planning commission's decision by a two-thirds vote, and that's of the entire governing body. So just wanted to talk real quick about the zoning process. I think Chris is gonna get into more details about this one as it applies to the city of Raytown specifically. But typically, there's an application that gets filed. In this case, I'm using as an example, a zoning change. Somebody wants to rezone property. The application needs to be filed by the property owner, or at least there needs to be an affidavit signed by the property owner, acknowledging that they are aware of this application, because you don't want your neighbor to submit an application, rezoning your property, you know, without your knowledge. The second thing is, is then notice of a hearing is published, and that's all that's required under the statute is the published notice. A lot of cities will also send notice to surrounding property owners. And that hundred and eighty-five feet, the significance of that hundred and eighty-five feet is the fact that if someone wants to file a protest, it could be filed by either the, the people affected by the rezoning, or it could be filed within those people. It's a thirty percent of the people within a hundred and eighty-five feet can file a protest petition. If they file the protest petition, what that means is, is it requires the governing body to approve then that specific application by two-thirds vote instead of majority. But again, on this notice, a lot of cities will require that, not only that the notice be published, but also sent to surrounding property owners, as well as being posted on the property itself. So then the planning and zoning, they hold the public hearing, and they make their recommendation. Lastly, it goes to the Board of Aldermen, and I have hearing question mark on this one, because under the statute, there is, it does not, it does not state that it has to be a public hearing before the Board of Aldermen. Most cities, though, do require that hearing. So I just wanted to, to let you note that distinction. Lastly, the Board of Aldermen will then make its decision. So then we get to subdivisions and plats. And so subdivision's really all about how are, is property divided? And so the city can establish various different requirements for subdivisions and plats. A lot of times, those regulations will set forth, what are the standards for the streets? What's the grade? What's, you know, the standard for installation of utilities and facilities? And so that's where it gets into a lot of more details about more of the infrastructure of a project. Plat approval is, normally, cities will follow the state statute on, on the approval. But there is something unique in that plat approvals have to be approved within sixty days of the application, of their providing the application, or it's deemed approved. Now, a lot of times, there are some provisions that state that the applicants and the city can agree to an extension. And, but most of the time, these things do roll through pretty quickly, and I think primarily is just because subdivision and plat decisions really are an administrative decision, which means cities just, you check the box. If, if someone submits a, a final plat document to the city, and they've complied with all the subdivision regulations, then there's not a lot of discretion for the city to deny that plat. So here's where I think the most important information is for at least this body, is that having to do with the zoning decisions? And generally, where do those zoning decisions fall? What category? There's the legislative, which is really defined by the police power. I have here, remember Euclid? Euclid was a case, it's called Village of the Euclid versus Amber Realty Company. And in that case, Euclid, the village, had rezoned a bunch of property that was owned by this Amber Realty Company. And because of the, the rezoning, there was some property that could not be used and as, as intensely as the, the Amber Realty Company really wanted. So they filed a suit against the village. And so this went up to the Supreme Court, and this is really the first time that the court said that zoning regulations are, will generally be held up as long as there's some public purpose. So so it's important to know that when you're making legislative decisions, courts are really gonna defer to what your decision is. So examples of some legislative decisions that you normally do, or, you know, if you're going to make changes to the zoning code, which we've done in the past, if you're going to rezone an area. Those are some, some examples. The quasi-judicial decisions that are made are really quasi-judicial decisions or decisions where certain officials are given power, that power is outlined by statute, and they are appointed to perform the statutory function. So the, the example here is really the Board of Zoning Adjustment. The Board of Zoning Adjustment makes those decisions about how the zoning regulations, how they should apply to specific properties, if you will. And I'll talk a little bit more about zoning commissions here in just a second. As I stated before, when we're looking at plating decisions, those plating approvals are really ministerial. We just apply, you know, whatever those subdivision regulations, if, if they've complied with those regulations, it's a check the box. And so there's a little discretion to, to not approve them. A good case out there, which really gets into the details of this, is the Furlong Companies versus City of Kansas City, had to do with a car wash. I won't go into that, that case, but it really lays out very well about plating decisions. So lastly, just wanna touch on, so in the standard planning and zoning enabling acts, there are provisions. Because the idea here is that if an ordinance goes too far, it's gonna be declared as a taking of property without just compensation. So, for example, if you've got some regulations where, you know, certain setbacks are required, and maybe there's a property because of the shape it is, or because of the size, there's no way it can meet those setback requirements. And so the, the, the enabling acts created a Board of Zoning Commission, and that Board of Zoning, excuse me, Board of Zoning Adjustment, and they're kind of the safety valve, if you will, to then be able to review the, those applications and determine if there is a certain, if certain criteria are met, whether the city's zoning regulations should actually apply to certain pieces of property. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you wanted to let Chris go next, and then ask questions.
Nobody got any questions right now? Let's go ahead and let Chris go.
Okay, can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the planning commission chairman and the planning commission in December asked that, with their annual meeting, that we bring forward a example of where do these applications go? What happens to them before we see them as a hearing? And I thought that was a very compelling type of, of project. So I put together a ten-point, or ten-page PowerPoint for that meeting, which was, I was directed to make it a little smaller. So what we did is, we boiled it down into a flow chart, which you have in the packet. And I'm gonna go over that flow chart now with you here. There it is. All right. And the example that I'm using for this is the most common type of application that you're going to see, at least at the time being in Raytown, that is the conditional use permit. Yes, this can also include planned development, plans, it can include rezones. But this is the most common one that we see is the CUP. And essentially, what, what happens is, there's a predeveloped meeting, if necessary, that's an optional step, depending on what they're actually asking for. If it's a major project type CUP, then we ask for that. If, if it's a very minor use CUP, then in many cases, we don't. But there'll be a predeveloped meeting with city staff, we go over the requirements, give them the, the application materials. And then it proceeds to the next step, which is totally on the applicant, and that is actually filing the application with the community development department. And by filing an application, it's, it's intended to be a quote-unquote "complete" application. Everything has to be there, or we don't accept it. And then the next step in the process, the city staff reviews the application for completeness, schedules the matter on an upcoming planning commission docket. This can also include, in this phase, this can include review of plans. We're doing one right now for a CUP that has a site plan included, and there's back and forth on that. So when we're, when we believe that the site plan is in the condition that is presentable for hearing, then we, at that point, we get it scheduled for planning commission action instead of prior. The next step from there, as you see on the flow chart, there's two potential directions it can go, just here and here. This one, city staff gives applicant mailing addresses for property owners with a hundred and eighty-five feet, and that's in our zoning ordinance, that requirement. And then there's the city staff sends public hearing notice, local paper for publication, that's a statutory requirement. So going down this path with the notices, the applicant picks up the public hearing. Well, I give them, okay. They get the list of property owners, and it's their responsibility to mail that. And then at the same time, within a few days, they pick up the public hearing sign to post on the property. At the same time, they send out the input meeting letter to the owners with a hundred and eighty-five feet. We ask them to take a picture of the posted sign on the property, so that there's evidence that it was posted at the correct time. And then the applicant holds the neighborhood meeting that was advertised up here, and provides staff a copy of a sign-in sheet synopsis of the meeting. It's important to point out that staff is not involved in this neighborhood meeting. This is purely between the developer and/or the applicant and the residents with a hundred and eighty-five feet that were invited to the meeting. And then it, it comes together with the public hearing notice publication. In this location, city staff prepares a staff report for the planning commission packet. And that includes everything gained through this entire process through here, which includes a lot of meetings with the developer or the applicant, as well as conversations with various neighbors that will call to get more information. So there's, there, by this point, there's expected to have been a lot of input from the neighborhood in a particular project. Unfortunately, sometimes Unfortunately, sometimes there isn't, but in some cases, we do get a lot of input. For example, in the recent case you heard with the adult daycare at seventy-eight hundred Raytown Road. And it proceeds to this step, city staff sends out planning commission packets to commissioners, applicant, copies board of alderman, post agenda, city hall lobby, and on the city website. And then it proceeds to planning commission public hearing. And assuming that there's not a continuance or request for more information that caused a delay, a recommendation is made that night, and then that person is forwarded to the board of alderman, public hearing and two readings of the ordinance, which is this step. And again, assuming that there's no delays in the process here or continuance requests, there would be two consecutive board meetings where there'd be a public hearing on the first one, continue potentially to the second meeting, and then there'd be two readings at the same time. And then finally, if the CUP is approved by the board of alderman, business must complete conditions and meet state conditions if applicable, obtain occupancy permit and file for a business license. Also in this step is, while this is ongoing, is waiting for the assigned copy of the ordinance to be provided for it to be official. And the mayor has a number of days after approval by the board within which to consider each and every ordinance to approve or veto. Now, notice this asterisk down here, average application takes three and a half months for complete processing. All of these steps that I went over here for a conditional use permit. If you, if a person applies in the middle of a, of a application period, which is approximately thirty days, takes three and a half months. So depending where they apply within there and depending on continuances, this could take potentially four or five months when you account for those things which do happen from time to time. So it's not a short process, and we sometimes get applicants who have, are not aware of this process and they open up shop in Raytown. We have to remind them that they have to go through this process and get the permit before they can proceed with their business. And that sometimes generates a lot of concern on the part of the applicant. And that's the timeline there. Anyone have any questions on the, the general process? And it's the same for rezones, very similar.
And you, Chris, would you take, there you go. Anybody have any questions for Chris?
Sure, Chris, can you kind of explain more on your timing regarding days in between those? I know you, certain app, after the applications are done within a hundred eighty-five feet, how much time does a person have to go to, to move to the next step?
Well, I'm going to take this off of the planning commission calendar. And for example, let's use, let's use Logan Villas, which is under review right now, go on the planning commission in March. Logan Villas just had their notices for the March meeting sent out on the ninth of February. That's for the, the neighbor notices, and the public hearing notice was published shortly thereafter. The, the public hearing sign will be posted on the property tomorrow. The applicant's going to be here from Springfield to do that. And the neighborhood meeting he's hosting on the eighteenth of February, which is Thursday. And then he has, over the weekend, put together a synopsis due by the twenty-second. And then the the packet is produced next week, or not next week, but on the twenty-sixth of February for the fourth of March meeting.
So there's no particular amount of time a person have to advertise for the application, correct?
Not for the neighbor notices, but there is a statutory requirement for the provision of the public hearing notice to be published fifteen days prior to the hearing date. And that's how state statute.
And then explain more, typically, we, when we have them, another board is aware of that, there was a change. But as far as your or, ordinance of being read, typically is two readings with the CUPs. When do they advertise the dates for that, for the initial reading? Maybe you can answer that question.
Yeah, those, those dates are all included in the neighbor notice that goes out, that the applicant sends on. In this case, the, he gets the list on ninth of March, they're mailed out by the eleventh of March. Included in that is not only the invitation to the neighborhood meeting, which he hosts, and the state makes clear in the notice, but it also includes the planning commission hearing date and time, and it includes the board of alderman meeting dates and times as well. And the hearing is only advertised as the first reading night. So in the case of, of Logan Villas, for example, that first reading night is going to be the sixth of April. And that's what went out on the notice for the residents to attend. Which, by the way, is actually the thirteenth because the sixth is election night.
It'll be the.
Anybody else?
Greg Walters.
Thank you. Chris, on the two meeting notice, this is a concern as far as, from my point of view. People that are out there in the public and, and they have something coming into their neighborhood, they're not as well versed as you or I or anybody else on this board as to what their alternatives are, if they are opposed, or if it's a contentious type of application. So do we make any steps to show them that if you want to make, to stop this? Because obviously, we're showing the developer how you have to go about developing and what's the rules you have to follow. Do we do this with the public? If anybody comes forward and say, hey, what can we do? Do we have any apparatus set up for that?
If the public comes forward to ask for options, we give them that. The first step in any application is to encourage the public to meet with the applicant at the neighborhood meeting. Staff is not present, so there's no pressure there with the city looming over the, over the proceedings. But it's an opportunity for the developer to meet one-on-one with all the, all the residents nearby and attempt to address their concerns. And that's why we request the sign-in list and the synopsis of what was discussed.
But there's no, there's no discussion with the people that live around the development.
If they, if they come to see me about it, as far as contact staff or come in to visit, we go over their options. The ordinance does contain options if they want to challenge, for example, property owner, the certain percentage of property owners within a hundred eighty-five feet. If it reaches a certain threshold, then they can trigger.
In as much as we're making this available, all this information available to the applicant, we're telling them, okay, here's your date line that you have to do this by, and we're not giving any type of information to the people that live in the area. Because Raytown is not Lee Summit. Lee Summit has lots of green space, Raytown has none. So almost anything that you have in, there's going to be a large development. These questions that need to go back to Jennifer after this. Is there, there's potential for them being contentious. And because of that, I think that we should adopt the policy whereby we also let the, if, even if it's in the letter going out from the applicant, if there are any questions, directing them to your office as to contact, who to contact within city hall if you have any questions or that you don't want to, you don't want to stir up a fight, but you want them to know who to go to. Because quite honestly, most people don't know your office exists.
Alderman Walters, that is included in the letter. There, there is a paragraph directing them to contact us if they have any questions.
Okay, is that all it says is that they haven't, if you have any questions?
Right, regarding the hearings.
Well, once again, as far as the applicant's concerned, we're telling them, these are the steps you must take to, to be approved. And if somebody's opposed to that, we're not showing them the steps that must be taken if you don't want it approved. I don't think that's equal.
If. Well, typically, Alderman Walters, I mean, if you look at this flow chart, which is, this is another idea of giving that, giving the applicant, and also giving the public opportunity to figure out what steps are taken. This is why we did things like this and presented to you as a board and a public hearing. But if you look at this, you've got three opportunities as a public before you even reach the board meeting to provide, to provide and get made aware of the project itself. You got the, the part here with the neighborhood meeting. Then you also have the, the, the application is submitted, made, made, made whole in the, in the lobby. And then you have the public commission, the planning commission public hearing. And then you have two board meetings to, to view it. So when, when you say that, are we letting the person know? That is provided, that's part of us putting information in the letter to contact us in order to do it. Typical applicants are not even as aware of the process either. So you try to make that, make this process available to both and make sure that citizens understand that the zoning that we put in place and the, and the plans that we put in place years before that they all have the capability of being involved in helps with, with demeaning, or directing us as staff and others of what steps to take and what type of businesses will be in those positions.
Okay, the, the application is, is, we help with the applicant. And in the letter, the applicant puts out, it tells us if you have any questions to direct them to, to Chris. If there, these, there will be two planning and zoning commission meetings.
One.
One. Okay. Do we?
One neighborhood meeting.
Do we have any confirmation, do we have any confirmation that these letters actually go out?
This was, this was debated last summer when the discussion on increasing the, or changing it to a certified letter format. We give the list to the property owner, we ask him, or the applicant, we ask him to give us a signed form back that states that everyone that was on that list was provided a copy of the letter. And so they sign that and date it and give it back to us and goes in the file.
Okay, this is, this is all applicant based. Because I, I know of situations where there have been, where people will tell you, and I could bring them to your office and they could tell you to your face that, no, we never did receive the letter from him. We never had a meeting with him because I didn't know about it. This is a, it's a concern because there are people who, who are worldly and know how to get around the, the rules and stuff like that. And the next thing to know, you may have a retail outlet in the middle of a residential neighborhood that people just simply do not want there for many reasons, lighting problems and stuff like that. I really think we need to make this something that protects the citizens, citizenry particularly in a town like Raytown that is completely developed. Because people have sunk a lot into their homes, they want to protect their neighborhoods, we should be advantage of it. I can tell you of an instance, of an instance that I had over here in my own neighborhood where a developer came. I beg your pardon.
Go ahead, Mr. Walters, and then Ms. Emerson's waiting, so you got about two minutes.
Thank you. Okay. Of, of a, a large change in the neighborhood, which put in a, a, a group home that we did not find out, except by my cause, my, my questioning the owner of the property. And when I was told by the owner of the property that this gentleman wanted to move here from a lake community to Raytown because he wanted to come to the Raytown School District, something just didn't click right. And when we did some digging, we found out what he was really bringing in here. He wasn't just moving his family here, he was moving many people from other, other families here to be taken care of. My point is, there are people out there who will, who will play the system. And I think we need to be aware of that. That's why we need to have some sort of verification that people actually did receive these letters that go out and that they actually do say what we want them to say. Otherwise, you end up with situations, and I can give you other examples, there's one up on Sixty-third Street. It's not a funny thing, Michael. People do not like that thing there, there have been armed robberies there, the lights are on all the, all night, day and night, it runs twenty-four hours, and they don't like it. And that's, that's what's been done.
Still get notified, so don't make.
No, sir, they did not. And I can introduce you to.
Thank you, Mr. Walters, you're done, Ms. Emerson, go ahead.
Yes, there is a sign posted for quite a few days, I think, what, fifteen days ahead of time on the property that is being, had, it's being questioned. And anybody that drives by there, whether they're in a hundred and eighty-five feet or further, if they have a problem, they can contact the city. And Chris will certainly take care of any questions or concerns that they have. That's all I have to say.
Derek Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and this question's related more to.
Move, move your mic just a little bit up close to your mouth, thank you. There you go.
Try and get it out, is that better?
There you go.
All right, for Mr. Gilbert or Mr. Hodges, I guess a question I would have, and I think this might go some of the way to resolving Mr. Walters' concerns, is there any mention of who their aldermen are in those letters? You know, I mean, just name and contact number and because maybe if, maybe that would be another resource for people to know that, well, you know, they've got city staff, but if they'd feel more comfortable talking to their elected official, that's somebody else they could reach out to.
There is not, but it, it's certainly an easy item to add to the bottom of the letter.
Yeah, I'm just asking the question, I'm, I'm, for feedback and discussion, that, that's, that's it. I think it would be a good idea, but.
Good, good, yeah, that's a good, good point, good point.
That's, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Good point, Mr. Ward. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else before?
Mr. Mayor.
Just a minute, Mr. Walters, I'm just checking to see if anybody else wants to speak, you've already spoken. Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody, Mr. Walters, go ahead.
Yes, in the incident which I spoke of in my own neighborhood, there were no signs posted on the property that I can swear to, and I can get other people to back me up on it.
Are you talking about the store?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
Well, there's only thing, this, this, my, my point on this is, we can put the alderman's name in the letter, but if the letter doesn't really get sent, it doesn't really make any difference. We ought to do a way that verifies that the people that live in the community have as much information going to them as does the applicant. That's all I'm asking for. And to be able to verify, if you do anything at city hall, I guarantee you, you are verifying it. I'm sure that Chris does, I'm sure that he can show you every document that's been signed and every document that's been passed back and forth, and he can give you a date and time on it. The people that are in the community, they are not.
Your point's well taken. Mr. Ward, you have, go ahead.
Well, I, and, and so following on to that, Mr. Gilbert or Mr. Hodges, do we have the people that are applying for these things to sign any sort of affidavit saying they've, they've mailed these?
Yes.
I, I mean, it's an affidavit, I mean, they have to.
Oh, not an affidavit, have them sign the actual mailing list stating that they mailed everything out that was on there to all the property owners listed.
I wonder if it would just, if it would make sense to maybe have them do an affidavit that's notarized and everything. So at least if they've lied, you know, where there's a possible perjury issue there. So it wouldn't guarantee anything, but you know. That might help address Mr. Walters' concerns.
And this, like, like we mentioned earlier, this was something that was discussed quite a bit last year, which that hundred eighty-five feet came about, which was a change and other changes that came about within that ordinance. If that's a request of the board to change the ordinance and bring that back up to a discussion, you know, that's up to you all as far as those changes. But to change that portion and require that certification, that would need to be changed to that ordinance.
Well, I, I'll look for your guidance on that, Mr. Hodges, I mean, I'm just asking the question.
I would say that for that standpoint, I've been on both sides of it, been in development side and been on the other side. For the most part, people try to do what's, what they know they need to do in order to try to, I mean, as a developer, when you're trying to do something now, the, the situations of Alderman Walters brought before us, I'm not, I can't speak to those, I wasn't here with those, and I know exactly when those happened or what the whole situation was. But I can say that what we've been doing thus far is, is working with the developers, ensuring and, and, and reiterating our desire that our citizens are aware of the project beforehand, so they may have opportunity to voice their opinions regarding those. And, and Chris has gotten quite a few opinions beforehand that helps before we ever get to, to your stage of approval with the project itself. You know, because you have to think about it as well, when a developer invests in a business within your city, they also want to invest something that the customers can, can, can utilize or actually be a part of. And so with that, if they come with something that no one else wants to be a part of, it doesn't really help their investment either. So we, we know there's several things you want to look at before you move down those roads regarding CUPs, regarding public projects.
Ms. Mary Jane Van Bussker. Hope you're, you're muted, ma'am. Nope, still muted. There you go.
I think it's time that we put some of this responsibility on the citizens. A lot of people see these signs and they think, oh, yeah, big deal, and they just drive on. A lot of people see these signs and they think, oh yeah, big deal, and they just drive on by. They don't stop to read them. A lot of them, when they get the mail, they don't even read their mail. They just see it's something from the city and throw it in the junk, throw it in the trash. That's not my fault, that's on them. And I think we need to quit spoon feeding these people. Let them take some responsibility and let's move on. That's all I got.
All righty, Ms. Bear.
I, I just wanted to add though, too, just to get, keep in mind that sometimes if property is already zoned for the particular use, you, you won't see an application come forward because it's a use that's already allowed. So I, Alderman Walters kind of brought up something about the group home in a residential area. It may have already been allowed, which is why you didn't see anything, but I'm not trying to get into what happened in the past.
It was not allowed. I can assure you of that.
Mr. Walters, do me a favor, please. Would you make sure you're recognized before you start speaking like everybody else?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. In the cases that I gave, one was a commercial development, the other one was a, a, a home for, for certain types of folks. And they, in both cases, in the one in the, the one in this neighborhood here, the city spent about sixty thousand dollars fighting it. So it's not that, um, that these things aren't being caught up on like my end or the people. And as far as Mary Jane's comments, the letter would not come from the city. The letter would come from a developer they do not know. I don't know if I would pick that up and open it myself, to be honest with you. I think that we ought to just have some kind of, some kind of ways that we can make certain that people are aware of what's happening, what's coming to their neighborhood. That's all. And I don't think it's outrageous to ask that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right.
They don't open it, it's on them.
Ms. Bear, do you have anything else to give us?
Uh, no, sir.
I do have a quick
Chris Gilbert, do you have anything else to give us?
Nope. We have time.
Mr. Walters, you got two minutes.
Thank you. I just have a question for Ms. Barrett. Under, uh, our current, you were talking about, uh, the planning and zoning commission's job in development areas and so forth. Uh, under our current way of operation, it does require a board of alderman approval. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make certain.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Now, a motion for adjournment. So, Ms. Mary Jane. Second, oops. Who was that?
Give it to Janet.
Oh, there you go. Ms. Janet, you got that one, okay.
Thanks.
All right. We'll do this by affirmation. All in favor, say aye. Anyone against? All right, see you guys at seven o'clock.